I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of May 7, 2024. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo? Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Mayor Protem Soto? And Mayor Patino?
Here. First thing we have on the agenda is the open public comment period. And I have six speaker slips. If the record can reflect, Mr. Escobedo just walked in.
Yes, thank you.
And I have Herbert Bolton, followed by Fermin Barbosa, followed by Jeff Lee.
Councilmembers, Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. Bolton.
Okay. I'm Herbert Bolton, 1629 Village Court, Santa Maria, California. I'm here to speak into the question of the salaries for the firefighters. Okay. I am a taxpayer. I pay taxes every day. I expect my tax money to be spent, as was voted on for Major U back in several times. Okay. And the first time, this is from this minute of the council, ordinance number 2012-12. The purpose essential, the purpose of this ordinance was to provide essential services and to maintain this for the city of Santa Maria, so that the money would not be taken and used in Sacramento. One of the wherethes is a five-minute response time in order to save lives is essential for the city of Santa Maria. Also, part of the publicity for this Major U was issued at that time. And here, Stowell said that if approved, Major U would enhance and maintain the public safety and the quality of the city of Santa Maria. Okay. Now, I have read all of the Citizens Oversight Committee reports. And as of the last report which I could get, which was 2021, '22, there is... I missed a page. Okay. There's about $17 million surplus in Major U. I bring this up, I raise this point to point out that it is not a lack of funds for the city not to adequately compensate these firemen. These firemen are at the bottom of the list of all their survey personnel. If Lambo gets their raise, if they will in a month or so, we're now at the bottom of the list. That's why we cannot maintain personnel. They're leaving in droves. You've lost 40% of your people because you're not paying them. Okay. Now, the many reasons that the fire department has problems, and it brought up to invite all the firemen here. They have turnouts that do not meet OSHA requirements. They're overdated. They're just not done. And it's not because of a lack of funds. We have much, have the funds. Major U has provided the funds. Now, with the $17 million surplus in Major U, the only reason that I can see that the city of Santa Maria, the council, is not providing adequate pay for these people is that they do not have the will. You don't have the will to do it. And I'm here to tell you that I would like for you to do the right thing. Do the right thing. These guys work 60 hours a week and more because they're understaffed, because the people keep leaving. You're not paying them right. You're not, you're just not treating them right. These are your basic personnel for the city of Santa Maria's safety department. I pay taxes. I want my money's worth.
Thank you, Mr. Bolton.
Thank you.
I also want to thank Gloria Soto for responding to my email with regard to this issue. I think it's very important that our leaders respond to the community, especially in time of need, especially in time when they want answers. And I don't have the details or the information that the gentleman that preceded me. I honestly feel that we elected you as our leaders to represent the best interest of the community and of the public. And I should not have to read reports and do, although it's smart, but I haven't reached that point yet in my desire to find answers. I trust, right, when we elected you, the public put trust in you to make the right decisions in our best interest, in our safety. And when community, when the community, when people in the community, like myself, like the gentleman that preceded me, have to spend hours and time doing their own research to find answers, it's a little bit embarrassing. So I come to you today to compel you to please go to the table, negotiate, do better by our firefighters. I've been a resident of Santa Maria for over 30 years. I am a semi-retired combat veteran. I live here, I work here, I want to stay here, and I want, and more importantly, I want to be safe here. I want my kids to be safe, and I want my family to be safe. When we neglect to pay our firefighters what they're due, when we neglect to pay our police what they're due, when we neglect our public safety elements within the city, we compromise... duties that you've been entrusted to do faithfully for the community of Santa Maria. Please do better. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barbosa. Jeff Lee, followed by Cory Pascola.
You hear that noise? They're probably going to save a life. Not a big deal, right? My name is Jeff Lee. I'm a business representative, political coordinator for Teamsters Local 986. I'm also the chairperson for the Santa Maria chapter of the Central Labor Council. I'm here to tell you that the Central Labor Council, in its capacity as a representative of the unionized workers here on the central coast, have taken great interest in watching the way that this council has treated these firefighters. I've noticed around town that every day, every week, a few more signs pop up in storefront windows. There's even a white truck driving around covered in blue tape to support your Santa Maria firefighters. What used to be a labor issue is becoming much more than that. This community will not stand by and let its firefighters be treated this way by our elected officials. If you can't do the right thing and get these firefighters a fair contract, we're going to find new council members that will. Thank you.
Cory Pascola, followed by Matt Chirkop.
Good evening. My name is Cory Pascola. I'm a fire engineer and treasurer for Local 2020. I have to be honest, never thought that in my career I'd be in the fire service, I would have to go before elected officials and advocate for fair pay. I'm here today advocating for an average wage for an above-average job because you think it's fair to keep our salary below average. Firefighting is not just an average job, and unfortunately, it seems you can't comprehend that. The problems you face are our problems as well. Daily drug overdoses, vehicle accidents, structure fires, medical aids, gang violence, homelessness, public assists, the list goes on. We are the ones responding to these calls every single day, no one else. The brave men and women of this department dedicate their lives to protecting the city and its occupants, often risking our own safety to ensure the safety and security of others. Yet despite our invaluable service, many of us struggle to make ends meet due to inadequate compensation. Firefighting is not just a job, it's a commitment to serving others selflessly. However, this commitment should not come at the expense of financial stability. Your firefighters deserve to earn a wage that reflects the crucial nature of their work and enables them to support themselves and their families without undue hardship. By supporting a fair wage increase for this fire department, you not only recognize and honor our sacrifice, but also invest in the safety and well-being of our entire community. Fair wages contribute to morale and retention within our fire department. When we feel valued and fairly compensated for our efforts, we are more likely to stay in our positions, reducing turnover and ensuring continuity of service. I've spent thousands of hours in training and classes, multiple fire academies, 10 years in the forest service, and gone through your application process three times to get this job. And now I'm wondering why? Why did I do all that to be treated this way by a city I've always wanted to work for? The only reason I can think of as to why I'm still here is because I truly believe I work alongside the best firefighters in this state. Your inaction and lack of respect has reached a tipping point. We are fed up with the lies and fed up with empty promises made by some of you in this room. The measure of humility is really simple. Can you tell the truth about yourself? The city deserves to know from their elected officials that they don't care about its fire department. You made it clear that we're not the priority. This fire department has been putting the city and its residents as their number-one priority for over 100 years. Every day, the men and women of this department show up for work, sacrificing time away from family, sacrificing our mental and physical health, and yet we will never give you the bare minimum. It's time for you to stop giving us your bare minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Chirkop, followed by, I think it's Becca Rubis Toman?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City staff. Matthew Chirkop, Santa Maria firefighters. Cory Pascola, right there, just, he said it all. He really did. I hope you take that in. And I'm just going to add one thing to that. Since we've been out of contract, the following proclamations have been agendaized since then. Water Awareness Month, Fentanyl Awareness Day, Compost Awareness Week, National Police Week, and Peace Officers Memorial Day, Go Rodeo Days, National Bike Month, National Day of Prayer, Public Service Recognition Week, National Autism Awareness Month, Donate Life Month, National Community Development Week, National Library Week, Fair Housing Month, National Sexual Assault Awareness Month, National Child Abuse Awareness Month, Arbor Week, 211 Day, National Black History Month, Respect for Life, Human Trafficking Awareness Month. There's two very important events you missed. Can any of you guess? That's it. Saturday was International Firefighters Day, May 4. Also, Firefighter Cancer Awareness Month in January. And you heard me speak at the last council meeting that one of our members was diagnosed with cancer. And this city gave him a hard time. Please do better. Thank you.
And Becca Rubis Toman? I'm sorry, I butchered your name. Go ahead.
Hello, council members. My name is Dr. Rebecca Rubisman. I could probably speak for hours on why your Santa Maria Fire Department deserves the raise they're requesting, so they no longer sit at the bottom of the pay pool and can keep up with the increasing cost of living here on the beautiful central coast. But I'm going to address you briefly from three different perspectives instead. First, as a physician and a surgeon that serves the local community. I see firsthand the severe health disparities that exist here in Santa Maria. I have seen countless patients brought in after community members called 911. I have performed lifesaving surgery on women suffering from ovarian torsion, ruptured cysts, and significant uterine bleeding that were initially assessed by your first responders out in the field. These men and women play a vital role in our community and deserve to be seen and respected by way of average pay. Second, as the wife of a fire captain. I know from personal experience the sacrifices that these families make every single day. When at work, these firefighters are putting their own lives on the line to help those of strangers. And when they are home, they are often exhausted from long shifts, stressed about being called in for overtime due to constant departures of well-trained firefighters to other departments with better pay, or even reliving traumatic calls they have gone on during their extremely difficult work hours. I am endlessly proud of my husband for his bravery and selflessness in fulfilling his passion for helping our community, but I see the wear and tear on him, and I know the cost of this job. Lastly, as a community member that can personally say that this department is full of compassion, love, and solidarity for their own. As I faced death straight on last fall after delivering my daughter at Marion Regional Medical Center, your Santa Maria Fire Department was there to carry me into the ER. They were there to stand watch over my newborn daughter when I was fighting for my life, and my husband was using every ounce of his own strength to care for me. They played with my two stepsons, who were scared and didn't understand the situation our family was facing. When I was laying in the ICU, receiving multiple antibiotics to fight infection and IV medications to make sure my blood pressure stayed high enough to sustain my heartbeat, they were the ones taking care of my family. Countless members of the department will forever hold a very special place in my heart for contributing to my ability to stand before you today, to mother my children, and to continue to serve the most vulnerable women in our community through my career. They deserve fair compensation for what they do day in and day out, for going above and beyond and putting their bodies and minds on the line for you and for the rest of our community. You do not want these men and women to leave your department because they can't support their families due to substandard pay, because they are the best at what they do, and they are the ones that you want responding when your house is on fire, or your spouse, or son, or daughter, or mother, or father is having a medical emergency. End this ridiculous standoff and put your money where your mouth is, pay them what they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. I will close public comment. The City Council will now recess to a closed session and will reconvene to regular meeting portions at 5:30. Madam Clerk, would you like to read the title?
Yes, there are two items for closed session. The first item is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6. And the second is a public employee recruitment city manager pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.8.
And the City Council will reconvene at 5:30. I would like to note that the interpreter for this evening is Mr. Martinez. Mr. Martinez, could you raise your hand? Okay. And please ask him for listening devices if you would like interpretation services. Antes de llamar a la junta orden, me gustaría notar que contamos con servicios de interpretación para este junta, y el señor Martinez está sentado atrás. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of May 7, 2024. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Mayor Protem Soto?
Here.
And Mayor Patino?
Here. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you give us a report on the closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. With respect to Item 3A, instructions were provided to the negotiating team. And with respect to Item 3B, no further report was necessary.
Thank you. So we will start with proclamations this evening, and the proclamation and presentation for Water Awareness Month. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez will be making the presentation.
Whereas the city of Santa Maria maintains a robust water awareness and conservation program that includes community outreach, school education, complimentary home water visits, and suspected leak notifications to residential and commercial customers, and whereas every industry, business, and resident can make a difference by conserving water at work, home, and school, and whereas residents of all ages and businesses and industries of all types are invited and encouraged to implement just one of many tips and ideas to help conserve and save water in Santa Maria. Now therefore, the Mayor, Alessandra Patino, of the city of Santa Maria hereby proclaims the month of May 2024 as Water Awareness Month in the city of Santa Maria, and urges everyone to do their part to conserve and prepare this precious resource. In witness thereof, she hereunto sets her hand and have caused the seal of the city of Santa Maria to be affixed here to the 7th day of May 2024. And here to receive this is Myra Ritchie from the Utilities Department.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, department heads, and city residents. On behalf of myself and the Utilities Department, thank you for this proclamation and proclaiming the whole month of May as Water Awareness Month. As an employee of 20 years' services in the Utilities Department, I myself, along with my director, managers, and supervisors, they helped implement the water conservation program. And as far as our outreach, we do an awesome job of having to promote and conserve the message to our community. We do outreach in both English and in Spanish, colored print ads, bus ads, radio ads, commercials, social media posts, and providing information on our city website. Again, thank you for this opportunity to speak and receiving this proclamation as a reminder to all, and with our water conservation campaigns, don't waste a job and let's save together. Thank you. And moving right along, this year, I'd like to announce the student winners of our 13th Annual Water Awareness Poster Contest. This contest invites all third-grade students enrolled in the Santa Maria Bonita School District. This year, we had a total of 303 colorful artistic posters that was submitted. Judges had a great time of having a look at each and every one of the posters. They laughed, they smiled, and they cried. These posters are to symbolize the importance of water, how to conserve water within our community. Again, we had a total of 303 posters. We had eight participating schools. With no further ado, I'd like to announce this year's student winners. We have a total of five student winners in five different categories. With no further ado, I'd like to call upon students, one by one, in no particular order. We have the first student for most educational from Alvin School, from Ms. McPeters' class, Janice Ochoa Hara Mio.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Janice Ochoa Hara Mio. My teacher's name is Ms. McPeters. I am in third grade and am nine years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because it's healthy for your body. Everyone, including plants, animals, needs water to live. It is, I like my poster because it is colorful, also because I choose some good ideas on how to save water, and I learn a lot doing it.
And our next contestant is for Best Celebration of Water from Sanchez Elementary School, Luz Beterbo.
Good evening, Madam Members and Council Members. My name is Luz Beterbo. My teacher's name is Mrs. Peterson. I'm in third grade and 10 years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because if we don't have water, we cannot live. I like my poster because it has a lot of colors and I did my best. Thank you for this award.
And our next winner is for Most Artistic from David Sanchez Elementary School in Mrs. Peterson's class. We have Deliza Mata.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Deliza Kokzawa Mata. My teacher's name is Ms. Peterson. I am in third grade and I am eight years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because water keeps us alive. About 60% of our bodies is filled with water. Water helps trees grow, and if we didn't have trees, we would not have air. Plants and animals also need water to survive. We need to not waste water because without water, there will be no life. I like my poster because I enjoy making it and I put effort into it, also because I love water. Thank you for this award.
And our next winner is for Most Colorful from Rice Elementary School, Mrs. Peterson's class. We have Enrique Andrade.
We have Enrique Andrade.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Enrique Andrade. My teacher's name is Ms. Peterson. I am in the third grade and I am nine years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because if you use it too much, one day the earth is gonna run out. I like my poster because of the turtle. It's funny that is the only realistic thing there. Thank you for this award.
And last, we have the most water wearer from Alvin School in Ms. Long's class, Javet Lopez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. My name is Javet Lopez. My name is Ms. Long from Alvin School. I am in third grade and nine years old. My poster is about water awareness. Water is important to all of us because it helps us stay hydrated and stay alive. It also helps the atmosphere and sky. I like my poster because it shows how water is important by not wasting water and instead keeping earth clean by picking up trash. Thank you for this award.
Again, thank you for all the student winners, especially the teachers. The teachers goes out to Ms. McPeters, Ms. Peterson, and Ms. Long, and also Ms. Peterson. Thank you, teachers, for all your hard work, and also to all the students who also participated. Again, it's always nice to see these students get involved and to have them educated of the importance of our water resources and how we can conserve in the community. We also like to acknowledge all the sponsors that have donated prizes to these students. I'd like to acknowledge Emerald Wave Media, American General Media, Santa Maria Discovery Museum, Red Robin Restaurant, Baskin Robbins Thirty-One Flavor, Rockin' Jump, Recreation Parks Department, and the Utilities Department. Again, I'd like to congratulate the student winners of this year's two thousand and twenty-four Water Awareness Poster Contest. Thank you.
Myra, not only are they very artistic, they can get up and speak, and they aren't afraid to speak.
Yes, definitely. This is my fun part of my job.
I know, I know.
Sorry about that, Chance.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
The next proclamation this evening is proclamation for Fentanyl Awareness Day, and Councilmember Soto will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Today's... Sorry. The proclamation is for Fentanyl Awareness Day, and it will be accepted by Fighting Back Santa Maria. Whereas Fentanyl Awareness Day is a day of education to raise public awareness that people are dying at alarming rates due to illicitly manufactured drugs mixed with fentanyl and synthetic opioids to increase potency and pressed into pills made to look like legitimate pharmaceutical drugs. And whereas the most common drugs involved in overdose deaths are fentanyl and other synthetic opioids, over a hundred and fifty people die every day from overdoses related to synthetic opioids like fentanyl. And whereas fentanyl is odorless, tasteless, cheap, and extremely potent, fifty times more potent than heroin, heroin, and a hundred times more potent than morphine, the number of opioid-related deaths involving fentanyl specifically increased from twelve in two thousand and nineteen to a hundred and fifteen overdose deaths in two thousand and twenty-two. And whereas it is becoming more common for individuals to use drugs without knowing it contains fentanyl and overdose as a result. Overdose deaths linked to synthetic opioids like fentanyl tripled nationally amongst teenagers in the last two years. And whereas, signed into law by Governor Newsom in October two thousand and twenty-three, Assembly Bill seven oh one allows the penalties for fentanyl trafficking to minors to mirror those of Schedule One drugs such as heroin, heroin, and cocaine. And whereas Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Coalition will play an important role in highlighting the community-wide efforts to increase awareness and decrease the use of this highly addictive and dangerous drug. And now therefore, Alice M. Patino, Mayor of the city of Santa Maria, hereby proclaims May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Fentanyl Awareness Day in the city of Santa Maria to raise awareness and prevent overdoses caused by fentanyl. The city of Santa Maria, Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley Coalition, and many partners have come together to invite our residents to participate in Fentanyl Awareness Day. And again, to accept this proclamation, we have Fighting Back Santa Maria.
Good evening, esteemed city council members and Mayor Patino. My name is T.R. Bumminglag.
And my name's Gabby Delgado from Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley.
National Fentanyl Awareness Day brings together individuals, parents, teachers, youth, and community members to help raise awareness of this dangerous drug. Today, May seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, is National Fentanyl Awareness Day as recognized by the Drug Enforcement Administration by joining the many voices dedicated to educating the public on the serious dangers of fentanyl poisoning from fake pills and other illicit drugs.
In two thousand and twenty-three, DEA seized more than seventy-nine point five million fentanyl-laced fake pills and nearly twelve thousand pounds of fentanyl powder. The two thousand and twenty-three seizures are equivalent to more than three hundred and seventy-six point seven million lethal doses of fentanyl. Laboratory testing indicates that seven out of every ten pills seized by the DEA contain a lethal dose of fentanyl. The DEA has seized a record seventy-nine point five million fentanyl pills to date in two thousand and twenty-three, which already exceeds last year's total of fifty-eight million pills. Thank you for supporting our efforts as we continue to provide education to our peers and community members. I would now like to introduce a couple of our students who would like to speak.
Good evening, esteemed city council member and Mayor Patino. My name is Hector. I care about helping others, especially about the harmful effect of fentanyl. Thank you for listening to us and helping us raise awareness.
Good evening, Mayor Patino and council members. My name is Adeline Espinoza, and I go to Pioneer Valley, and I'm a junior. National Fentanyl Awareness Day is important to me and many more. This is because our city suffered from many overdoses due to fentanyl. I personally witnessed students at my school overdose many times, and that was really scary for me to see. So by raising awareness, in hope of reducing overdoses within students, I want to thank you for all your continuing support on this important issue. Having this proclamation means a lot to me since it affects so many people my age. Thank you to our city council for helping us raise awareness.
Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam. I just wanna make a quick comment on and highlight the work that Fighting Back Santa Maria Valley has been doing throughout this city and the county. I have seen firsthand you guys' commitment and your hard work and not just, just, I would say, saving lives and taking care of one of our most valuable assets we have, that it's our childrens and our youth. So, thank you, guys.
Talking about saving lives, over a million Palestinians have been killed, have been bombed in Rafa, and you're talking about saving lives?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Over a million Palestinians have been bombed.
You can leave.
Right now, as we speak.
Officer, you may escort him out.
Right now, as we speak. One million Palestinians, fifteen thousand children have been killed, fifteen thousand children have been bombed by Israel. Stop harming Israel. Stop harming Israel.
When Fighting Back first started, we had a problem with meth, and meth was just running rampant, and not that it isn't, but I thought it can't get any worse because meth was so bad. And here we are, and it's gotten worse. You just can't believe anything is so potent and so powerful, and people are willing to put it into their bodies. But anyway, Fighting Back has done such a great job in our community and going into our schools and educating kids, so I really wanna thank them for that. The next proclamation will be for Compost Awareness Week, and Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez will be making that presentation.
Whereas the Compost Research and Education Foundation, along with Canada, Australia, the United Kingdom, and other countries have declared the first full week of May to be the annual International Compost Awareness Week. Whereas organic materials suitable for composting represent a large percentage of materials that are landfilled and could be composted each year, and composting is an effective form of waste reduction, reuse, and recycling. Compost improves the soil structure, reduces erosion and runoff, supplies the soil with a variety of macro and micronutrients, and enables compost amended soils to use less water. And whereas using sustainable soil enriching compost helps prevent the erosion of valuable topsoil without depleting valuable wildlife habitats. Community sustainability is enhanced by composting green waste, bio solids, and other organic materials, and promoting the use of renewable resources in landscaping, horticulture, and agriculture. And whereas returning composted organic resources to the soil is a method of decreasing the dependence on chemical fertilizers, decreasing erosion, reducing water consumption, and non-point pollution. And whereas the city of Santa Maria has initiated green waste and food waste collection programs to aid in the efforts of environmental sustainability, Engle and Gray Inc., Regional Composting Facility, Santa Maria, has been successfully composting organic material for sustainable agricultural practices since nineteen ninety-three, and the city has invested in collection programs to meet state requirements and save valuable landfill space. And now therefore, Alice M. Patino, the mayor of the city of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the week of May fifth through the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, as Compost Awareness Week in the city of Santa Maria, as well as recognize the efforts of the composting councils, extension agents, householders, landscapers, farmers, recyclers, public workers, composter gardeners, and plant growers everywhere, along with Engle and Gray Inc. and Harvest Blend Compost. In witness thereof, she heresets her hand and has caused the seal of the city of Santa Maria to be affixed hereto the seventh day of May, two thousand and twenty-four. And to accept this is Bob Engel of Engle and Gray.
Good evening, Mr. Engel.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor, fellow council members, I really appreciate you taking the time to recognize Compost Awareness Week and the use of compost out in the marketplace. This week, we're celebrating at Engle and Gray. We have on seven forty-five West Betarravia Road from ten to one on Saturday. We're gonna have the Garden and Compost Fair, our annual event, where we have all kinds of events for kids. We show kids how to make potting soil. We give them veggie plants to put in the potting soil and take home with them. Home gardeners, if you wanna come out and get a batch of fresh veggie transplants, you can take them home with you, build your own garden, take some compost. We have free, oh, no, free, it's complimentary compost. Because compost has a heavy value, and we don't give it away free, we give it away complimentary, no charge. And you're welcome to come and get up to one cubic yard, which is about the size of a washer machine. We have people from all walks of life come, some comes on bikes with buckets. One guy had a trailer last year on the back of his bike. He took almost a yard of compost. But anyway, we have a great time, so that's Saturday, ten to one. I think the city of Santa Maria's Public Utilities Department will be out there talking about food waste composting and being a great partner with us in getting people to recycle their organic material. Other than that, I'd really thank you. We are celebrating our thirty-first year, and I think I've been coming here about twenty years now. We started just right around after the two thousand. I was at a national meeting, and a lady from Canada was doing compost awareness, and I said, you know, the United States Composting Council needs to get involved, and we need to do it, make it international. And so there we kept growing countries, and it's kind of gotten into a lot bigger thing over the last twenty years. So, thank you very much, appreciate your effort.
Thank you.
Yes.
These are cute. Thank you very much.
That signifies the water you save with compost. You don't need your watering bucket as much because when you put compost in the soil, it makes the soil retain the water so much more. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is a proclamation for National Police Week and Peace Officers Memorial Day, and Councilmember Cordero will be making the presentation.
Whereas all... Hello? Okay. Whereas all of the promises America offers, none is more precious or elusive than the right to be free of crime. And whereas the dedicated men and women who have chosen law enforcement as a career face extraordinary risk, danger, and preserving our freedoms and security. And whereas during the week of May twelfth through May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, National Police Week is observed to be recognized, to recognize the hazardous work, serious responsibility, and strong commitment of our national police officers. And whereas in conjunction with the important observance of the city of Santa Maria is observing May fifteenth as Peace Officers Memorial Day in commemoration of those noble officers who have tragically sacrificed their lives in the line of duty. And whereas four California peace officers are recognized as being killed in the line of duty during two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas special observance provide all the Santa Marians with the opportunity to appreciate the heroic men and women who have dedicated their lives to preserving public safety. Now therefore, Alice Patino, Mayor for the city of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the week of May twelfth through May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as National Police Week, and proclaims Wednesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in the city of Santa Maria, and encourages all residents to remember those individuals who gave their lives for our safety and express our appreciation to those who continue to dedicate themselves to make Santa Maria a safer place in which to live. In witness thereof, and she has placed her hand on this, the mayor of the city of Santa Maria and the seal of the great city of Santa Maria on the seventh day of May, two thousand and twenty-four, and it's signed by Mayor Alice Patino. And I have to say that, I think I've said something similar to this before, in the current environment that we're going through nationally, and I think probably everyone in the room knows that my roots come from the Santa Maria Police Department. All cities aren't this way. There are many cities that allow these kinds of things that were just in here just ten minutes ago to go unabated, and that's not so here in Santa Maria. Right from, and the mayor takes leadership on this, and our police department, our council people, we all support the police. people, we all support the police, and we support you folks, the people that deserve our service. And here to receive this is Lieutenant Danny Rios.
I'm going to reiterate a little bit of the text that was in the proclamation, but I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, honorable council members, and city leadership. And I really am deeply honored and humbled to stand before you tonight and accept this proclamation on behalf of Chief Snyder, our men and women in blue, and their families. This proclamation holds a special significance, not just for me and my brothers and sisters in blue, but for all those who serve law enforcement and for the families that support them. National Police Week is a time to remember and honor those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty. It's a time to reflect on the courage, dedication, and selflessness of our law enforcement officers who put their lives on the line every day to keep our community safe. Let us also remember the families of our fallen heroes who carry the weight of their loss every day. Their sacrifices are measurable, and their resilience is an inspiration to us all. I would like to share with you that next week, Wednesday, May 15th, at 10:00 a.m., the Santa Maria Police Department will hold a Peace Officers' Memorial Ceremony at the PD to honor the four peace officers who perished in the state of California in the line of duty during 2023. Our keynote speaker will be Santa Barbara County District Attorney John Savernock for this event. The event is complimentary. There'll be a complimentary light brunch following at 11 o'clock when it's over. It's open to the public, and it's going to incorporate the memorial, a motorcade procession, helicopter flyover, riderless horse, bagpiper, 21-gun salute, and a rendition of taps. And that complimentary light brunch will follow with a benevolent fundraiser, raffle drawing. If you need any more information, I can be reached through the city's telephone system at extension 1307, and then Sergeant Felix Diaz at extension 1276, and Chrissy Alvarez at extension 21442144. Our co-chairs for the committee can also be contacted for more information, and it's on our social media pages. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cordero.
I, I don't, I don't want to leave anyone out, and I don't know if there's, if I, if I am, I want to apologize. But I want to ask Commander G. to stand up. Tommy. Tommy G. is, was one of my mentors when I came to the police department, and he worked for the Santa Barbara County Sheriff's Department. He was only a lonely old sergeant at the time, and he left the department as a commander. And it's because of people like that that we are.
Thank you.
The next proclamation is Go Rodeo Days, and I will be making the presentation. I say rodeo is the noun and rodeo is the verb, and it's a real exciting time, it's coming upon us. Whereas the time is fast approaching for the 81st Annual Elks Rodeo and Parade, May 30th through June 2nd, 2024, in the City of Santa Maria, considered by many to be the event of the year. And whereas continuing the tradition of Clarence Manetti and Leland Butch Semus, hundreds of loyal Elks Lodge members, 1538, have volunteered to have been drafted to make this rodeo a tremendous success and to cause Elks Lodge 1538 to be named number one Elks Lodge in the United States numerous times over the past 35 years. And whereas the Santa Maria Elks Rodeo Parade will begin at 10 o'clock in the morning on Saturday, June 1st, and continue down Broadway from Mill to Enos Streets. And whereas it has been a longstanding tradition to begin wearing Western clothes, which we are doing tonight, several weeks prior to the Elks Rodeo. Now therefore, I, Alice Patino, mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaim May 7th through June 2nd, 2024, as Go Rodeo Days in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents and businesses to enter the rodeo spirit by wearing Western apparel. And I have caused my hand and caused the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed the 7th day of May, 2024. And here to receive this is Scott Parsons and Peter Sterling.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the city council. We really appreciate your support that you give us every year, from our community, from our volunteers, and from our supporters from the rodeo, from the general community. We really appreciate it. You know, Santa Maria is a special place, and we're very well-known nationwide as a rodeo. We're in one of the top-rated rodeos in the nation. I don't know if people know that, but we carry that recognition. And our successes, also the Golden Circle of Champions has helped make that possible. And that's a program that we've developed, and it's gone nationwide as well. So we've had some very big successes over the years, and we really appreciate that. And our successes will go back, you know, as based on, you know, the people, our community, our fans. The rodeo performers that come, they all appreciate coming here. They're very excited. They say Santa Maria is a special place, and it really is. And so that's how we get the good performers and so on out, because they really enjoy being here. Thank you so much, and we appreciate this recognition.
Thank you very much, and thank you for all your hard work out there. The next proclamation will be for National Bike Month, and Councilmember Escobedo will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And just want to clarify, bicycle, bike, when we talk about bike, it's bicycle. Yeah, I was asked a couple of times why bikes. But no, I have the honor and privilege to present this proclamation for National Bike Month. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, environmentally sound form of transportation, and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment for Santa Maria's scenic beauty. And whereas the City of Santa Maria facilitates and promotes cycling through our public works department, which creates and maintains bike lines, paths, signs, and signals, our utility department, which sweeps bicycle lanes clean, or will keep them clean, or GIS department, which facilitate reporting of needed maintenance, or community development department, which makes sure developments have adequate short and long-term bicycle parking, or recreation and parks department, which maintains bicycle paths and trims city trees and bushes and jumps in bicycle paths and lanes, and facilitates cycling events, or code enforcement department, which facilitates the trimming of trees and bushes on private property, and the proper placement of garbage cans, or police department, which enforces not parking in bicycle lanes and helps protect cyclists from children to seniors, as well as patrolling or bicycling themselves, or public library, which lends books of how to repair and safely ride bicycles, as well as books and movies of cycling adventure, or schools which teach childrens to cycle, and the city council, which considers and passes budgets and ordinances to protect and regulate cycling in our fair city. I would say great city. Whereas creating a bicycling-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, grow the economy of Santa Maria, improve traffic safety, support student learning outcomes, and reduce pollution, collisions, congestion, and wear and tear of our streets and roads. Throughout May, the residents of Santa Maria and its visitors will experience the joy of cycling through educational programs, community events, special cycling rides, art, field, and by simply getting out and going for a ride collectively, known as cyclomania. And whereas Cal Bike, Move Santa Barbara County, the League of American Cyclists Schools, or Recreation and Park Departments, the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce, Companies, and Civil Group will be promoting cycling during May. Now therefore, Alice M. Patino, mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby proclaim the month of May, 2024, as National Bike Month in the City of Santa Maria, and urge all residents to join us in celebrating cycling. And here to receive this proclamation, we have Aaron Bonfilio, Director of Multimodal Programs with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable members of the council. On behalf of the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, I want to thank you kindly. But more importantly, we appreciate the City of Santa Maria's participation and commitment to cycling throughout the month of May. Every month, or every year, the month of May is affectionately known as cyclomania here in this county. It's a lot of fun, a little bit of mania, and all events are complimentary. As noted, couldn't help myself. As noted, it's a month-long celebration about biking and rolling for those who don't or cannot bike, but the goal of which is to help folks learn about and encourage them to use another form of transportation that they may not typically use to get where they need to go. In the past, the list of events and the rides and activities have been heavily focused on the south end of the county. This year, as folks may know in this room, the City of Santa Maria, along with Santa Barbara Move, and the good citizens of this city, have organized more events in the City of Santa Maria than there are in the south or anywhere else in the county. So congratulations to you all and to the city for your participation in cyclomania. If you'd like to learn more, go to cyclomania.org, and all, like I said, all events are free, no matter where you go, north or south. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for driving all the way up here. Did you come up on a bicycle, Mr. Bonfilio?
Earlier today, I rode my bike, but not, not-
Not up here. Thank you very much. I'm going to open the public comment portion of the agenda now, and Madam Kirk, could you please read the criteria?
Yes, Madam Mayor. This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items. Closed session items are matters not on the printed agenda this evening. If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, now is the time to raise your hand in the Zoom portal. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given. However, state law does not allow action to be taken on matters not on the printed agenda. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form or request acknowledgement in Zoom. And we have four speakers.
Thank you. Okay, Benjamin Ortiz, followed by Mans DiParini, followed by Dr. Tammy Waterman.
Sweet. Thank you. Hello, Mayor. Hello, council members. My name is Benjamin Ortiz. I'm a resident of Santa Maria District 2. I'm back again to ask that you support our firefighters by meeting their requests at the negotiation table. Requesting an average rate of pay is, in my opinion, the bare minimum. Our firefighters, like all of us, deserve to be paid a living wage. That means being able to support a family, if that's what they want. That means being able to afford rent or a mortgage, and hopefully one day that means being able to retire. Thank you, thank you for your time, and please show your support to our firefighters.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Mans DiParini. You know what? That is Mavis, isn't it? Yeah, okay. Mavis DiParini. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and city council members. I'm here because of the fee increase to $44 of our classes that are taken at the Elwin Muscle Senior Center. I'm having trouble paying. I have a disabled wife, so I pay for two. I'm finally, I'm finally getting out to participate in some of the activities at the Muscle Senior Center. And I forgot what I was going to say. Yeah, I just want to know if there's any way, there's no discount for disabled to pay the fees from $44. Non-residents, which is ORGIT, they have to pay a lot more, like $56. There's no discount for seniors, you know, we're taking the class at the senior, and no family discount if it's husband-wife couples that are taking a class. So we do have some members from the classes that are here. We just wanted to be noticed. We haven't gone away. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Pasada. He just walked out. Okay. That's fine. I'll just get him afterwards. Thank you very much. Dr. Tammy Waterman.
Good evening. Thank you so much for taking a moment to listen to what I have to say. My name is Dr. Tammy Waterman, and I'm representing not only my family, but those of us who live in the area of Valley Christian Academy School. I'm also a veterinarian and a local business owner. I live on 297 West Waller Lane, obviously with my children there. I'm having to drive my children, and I'll have new drivers from East Waller Lane crossing Samaria Way to get to the school. We have noticed over the past two years that traffic at the intersection there has gotten worse. Frequently, traffic does not heed to pedestrians at crosswalks or slowed down to the posted 25 mile an hour school zone. I have waited for extended periods of time at the intersection to cross that Samaria Way. Often, I'm required to turn right and make a U-turn to take my kids to school. In addition, even though we live close to school, it's not safe for my kids to walk. The crosswalk is not very visible, and commuters often do not slow down to stop for a pedestrian. In addition, the flashing light on Samaria Way to notify the drivers of the 25 mile an hour speed zone has not worked for a long time. Now that I have a 17-year-old who's driving, and another one to get her license, I'm very concerned for their safety and that of my other children that may be driving in the car with them, especially since they're having to actually, I relate it to playing dodgeball. You're having to like cross the street as fast as you can without getting hit. Unfortunately, traffic at this location is expected to get worse with two new housing developments and a commercial development under construction in Samaria Way. I have reached out by email and phone to Luis Magna of City of Samaria Public Works, yourself, Mayor Patino, and city council members, Mayor Abel Hernandez and Gloria Soto. It's my understanding that a traffic study for the Samaria Phase 2 project identified a need for the intersection control evaluation at the intersection of Samaria Way and East Waller Lane. Unfortunately, I've been told that it will take months to years before a traffic light is conditioned and implemented due to lack of funding. This response greatly disturbs me considering that the intersection is in front of a school, and many children are at risk. Actually, just one month, a child that goes to the school, Christian Brewer, got hit on a crosswalk just nearby, and he almost got killed by a drunk driver that wasn't paying attention as he was driving through the intersection. Please consider allocating city funds for a traffic light at this intersection as a priority to slow down the cars that are driving sometimes as fast as 50 miles an hour through the intersection, with hopes in preventing a fatal accident from occurring in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Waterman, what was the intersection again? Is Samaria Way-
Samaria Way and East- Samaria Way and East Waller Lane.
Okay. Someone will be getting in touch with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you for bringing your family.
Good evening, City Council Members.
Good evening, Mr. Davis.
And Madam Mayor. Joe and I were both in the rest of the gardens of the north end of town. We're here because we were cited due to our driveways being too big, more than 50% of our front yard. I was there personally 20 years ago. We went to the association, went through all the proper channels, thought we did everything right, and coming to find out, it's against city ordinance. Our struggle with accepting it is the fact that we can't park on the streets. There's no, the parking on the ends of the sides are all packed, very little parking. And so we don't have the same opportunity as the city people do. You know, if you live out in the city, you can park on the street. So we're limited. So we expanded our driveways to accommodate the people in the home. And so we were asking, we were told that we'd have to come to you guys, that you guys would, if there's a change or a way to handle it, that you guys would be able to do that. So we're coming to see if there's a way that the associations that are totally different and have different rules in and of themselves, and more restrictions, if there would be a way to be exempted, add-on amendment to the ordinance or something being, especially since we've eased restrictions on multifamily zoning, ADUs, and everything else. We're putting more people in homes, yet we're still struggling with the parking. So we're asking if there's some way we can address that, and/or being that we're cited, if we could, in addition, get an extension, grandfather it in. We did everything that we thought was right, and unbeknownst, I'm no ignorant, this is no excuse, but we had no idea. And so we went door-to-door through the neighborhood and to make sure that we weren't the only ones that feel that way. And we, there's many, many families that felt the same way and/or in the same situation. And being that it's just based on complaint-driven, someone didn't like our driveways and complained against us, and we don't want to include anybody else, but we would like to see if there's some way we could address that or get some kind of exemption for HOAs. What do we do?
Okay. I have your phone number here, Mr. Davis. And Mr. Wu, can you contact him, and we'll see what we can get done for you. I know parking is such a huge issue right now in the whole state of California, but that being said, we need to figure this out.
Yeah, we weren't being defined in any way, shape, or form. We're just ignorant.
Thank you.
So if we can get some help, it'd be great.
We sure will. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you guys. Appreciate it.
I will close, I will close the public comment portion of the agenda. The next item is the consent calendar, and I have one speaker for the consent calendar that would like to speak on item 11D6. And that's Lourdes Luiz. 11, 11D.
Yes.
Yeah.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Patino and City Council Members. My name is Lourdes Luna, and I am here on behalf of my neighbors at Pacific Crest Estates and myself. And we would please like for you to consider our petition to make Pacific Crest a permitted parking community similar to that of Bradley Square. We have many, many issues affecting our neighborhood due to people parking that don't live in the neighborhood. There's a lot of activities going on, men urinating on the streets, leaving trash, beer bottles, drinking in cars. We don't even let our children really play outside anymore. I have four children, and my two older children used to be able to play outside and run around the neighborhood with no safety issues. And now my two daughters, I won't let them outside due to the activities outside of our neighborhood. And we would please like for you to consider our petition tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. So anyone have anything they want to pull on the consent calendar?
None, Madam Mayor.
Do I have a motion?
I'm both.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just coming, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam. You just want to let the council know that I had a conversation with Lourdes about this issue, and I really, I really appreciate that the neighborhood coming together and putting these, moving this forward. So I'm happy to make this motion and looking forward to get this passed.
Thank you. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next on the agenda is a regular business item, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. A presentation will be given by League of California Cities Regional Public Affairs Manager, David Mullinex. Good evening, Dave. How are you doing?
Good evening. Thank you. Great to be here, Honorable Mayor and Council Members, to talk about an initiative that's going to be on the ballot this November, that every city, county, special district, and quite frankly, working-class families in California will be dealing with. Let me get quick background for people who don't understand, who don't know the League of California.
Before you start, Mr. Mullinex, you were here tonight. So you heard two different situations about the parking, and you've seen what I go through on the Housing Committee and the parking that is, it's not just here in Santa Maria, it's all over.
Absolutely.
But you were here to hear it tonight. Thank you.
And that is, those are issues that most cities, whether you're inland, coastal, big city, small city, are dealing with. And I empathize and hope we can work through this, through this next year. The League of California Cities, we've been around since 1898, and our main mission, we represent every city in the state, and our main mission is to protect and enhance local revenues and local control. We try to utilize the collective power of all cities in the state to bring them together to fight for issues like you just spoke of, Madam Mayor. And there are issues that come out of Sacramento that impact local governments each and every day. There are thousands of bills that get introduced every year, and this year was no different. There were 2,000 bills that were introduced by the legislature, and about 1,000 of them will impact local governments both positively and negatively. How do we try to help preserve local control and local revenues? We're kind of a three-legged stool. One, we have an education program. In that education program, we conduct conferences, seminars, and workshops, educating city staff and city elected officials on new challenges and new laws that come out of Sacramento each and every year. We also have a team of lobbyists, and again, like I said, there's 1,000 bills that just got introduced by the legislature. And we have lobbyists that deal with different policy areas, whether it's housing, transportation, rev and tax, those type of issues. And we try to make sure that cities are represented and not impacted negatively, and again, making sure that local control isn't impacted and that our local revenues are protected. And finally, we have a group called the Regional Manager Program, which we build political capacity. We try to make sure that we are advocating, educating our local elected officials and local communities, and making sure they're advocating up there to Sacramento, to our legislators, making sure that our voice here locally is being heard, and they're making sure that they understand the challenges that we face here locally, and when they need help up there in Sacramento, that we can help them as well. This year, let me see. I think I skipped one. Okay. This year, we have, there's going to be 12 initiatives. There's 11 initiatives right now that are qualified on the ballot. Let me, I think I, there we go. There are 11 initiatives right now that are qualified for the November ballot. There will probably be another four or five as well. The two that are going to impact local governments the most are going to be, they call it the Taxpayer Protection Act, we call it the Taxpayer Deception Act. And there's also ACA 13, which also impacts the initiative as well. Now, what the initiative does, what, who is behind the initiative, number one, is California Business Roundtable. They represent the largest and most powerful businesses in the state, corporations in the state, and they also, a lot of land developers as well. They spent $16 million to qualify the initiative. They were spending $14 as signature to qualify the initiative, and they got over, yes, $14 as a signature. And they spent $16 million to qualify the initiative for this November. And what this measure really is, they call it, again, the Taxpayer Protection Act and Government Accountability Act, but what it really is, it's a bait and switch that allows large developers and large corporations to kind of foist their responsibility and their responsibilities to communities onto working-class families in California. They're trying to carve out tax exemptions and fee exemptions as well. Here are the people that qualified the initiative. Four of those are large developers in LA. You can see the amount they donated. There's a hedge fund, Blackstone, and then there is AMR, which is an out-of-state firm that is trying to kind of corner the market in emergency services in the state. That adds up to around $16 million. Now, this is who put it on the ballot. These are the types that are going to benefit from it. It's really got nothing to do with taxpayer protection and government accountability. They are trying to carve out tax exemptions and fee exceptions for themselves that help fund local services and to make our communities the best they can be. And there you go. There's, again, 11 initiatives. There'll be another four or five on the ballot when it comes down to. So in the, in the near future, what's on the horizon? There was a lawsuit by Governor Newsom and the legislature that argues that this initiative, it's one of the, I've been on part of 35 campaigns in my life, almost 20 statewide initiatives. This is maybe the worst written initiative I've ever seen. It's very convoluted, it's ambiguous, it's contradictory, it's ill-defined, it's undefined. And what it does, it has an immense impact on the way government conducts its business at every level, both the state, regional, and local levels. And what the lawsuit says is it's not an initiative amendment, but it's a constitutional revision, not an amendment. And a revision requires a constitutional convention because it impacts so much. An amendment usually has a singular type of focus on amending the Constitution. This has multiple layers, and again, it's so ambiguous, it could encompass almost every level of government and how we do business. Tomorrow, the court will be hearing oral arguments on this initiative. And what we expect to hear back, whether the governor and the legislator are asking the Attorney General to remove, the court, I'm sorry, the court, to remove the initiative from the ballot, because it, again, they are, we're contending it is a constitutional revision. We did, the Cal Cities, along with other groups, did file an amicus brief as well. Now, ACA 13 is the other initiative that is going to impact this. In the initiative, it says that right now, if a local group wants to put something on the ballot and they gather signatures, they gather enough signatures, then it's a 50% plus one vote, a simple majority to pass that measure locally. What this would require, this CBRT initiative would require, is that would be two-thirds vote, a special election. And what ACA 13 does, and it will be on the ballot, it says, if you're going to increase the threshold of any ballot initiative, then you must first meet that threshold. So if ACA 13, and there'll be a prop number, they give the prop numbers out in July, early July, or late June, early July, and what it says is, if they do not attain that threshold that they're trying to impose on communities on their ballot measures, then they lose. They have to get the two-thirds vote as well. So if you want to impose something on somebody, you have to meet that threshold as well. We did a fiscal analysis on what this initiative would do to local governments, $20 billion over 10 years, $2 billion a year from fees and charges adopted since 2022. And again, that hundreds of millions, you probably, I probably was conservative on that, it's probably billions of dollars of measures and bonds will be impacted on that because in the measure also, it says, if you pass the measure locally, and there's over 100 communities around the state that pass revenue measures, whether it was to fund public safety, to fund roads and streets and roads, and other services in their community, if they did not put a sunset in some other language in the ballot, and this was even before their initiative was qualified, there's a retroactive measure that cancels out over 100 measures. So it's basically undoing the will of local communities in over 100 cities around the For us, it, what this initiative also does, as I pointed out, is incredibly poorly written. When we have teams of constitutional lawyers look at this, whenever we ask questions, the answer is always, well, that's ill-defined and undefined. And when you're talking about initiative, this is a constitutional initiative. You cannot amend a constitutional initiative. A constitutional initiative can only be amended by another constitutional initiative. So it's imperative that when you write a constitutional initiative, that it's right, and it's tight, and it's locked in, and it's clear. This initiative is none of those things. Like I said, it undermines the will of local citizens over 100 communities. They will have to, if this measure passes, they have 12 months to go back to their community. They have to incur all the election costs. They have 12 months to do it. You have to have a 5-0 vote from your board, in every board that, over these, over 100 of these local initiatives. You get 12 months to do it again. So you'll be facing a completely different voter profile. You will be incurring all the election costs yourself. And again, usually when elections happen, you share the cost within your county. Each city will be incurring those costs for those election, those special elections that will be imposed on them. And we're talking about hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars per election. And what this really is, are these powerful developers that are putting up all this money are trying to shield themselves from having to pay their fair share when they do business in our communities. It also redefines, the real, real onerous part is, it redefines how fees and, fees and penalties are imposed. What it will say now is, there's a completely new definition of what a fee is for when somebody, a mitigation fee, an impact fee, a fee to do business in your community, there'll be a whole new standard. They do not spell out that standard in the initiative. What that means is, there'll be a litigation over how that process happens. A city like Santa Maria, I would imagine you have 300, 400, 500 different types of fees on your fee schedule. The new standard will be, if somebody comes and says that is not the lowest possible cost for a fee, because right now, it's a reasonable cost, and fees are not a revenue generator for local communities, they're basically cost recovery on, you know, when somebody wants to do business or in some impact in your community, it's a cost recovery on, on your community dealing with that. That will now be at a point where you have to have the lowest possible cost. We don't know what that means exactly, because again, they don't spell it out. So there'll be litigation, and if they say, when you do have a fee, somebody can say, well, I don't believe that's the lowest possible cost. That's litigation, or it goes to the city council, and you'll have to have elections on every single fee you have. You'll, they will be lawyers lined up. This will be a full employment act for lawyers, basically. And you will basically have elections on every single fee that they want to litigate on. And as we have known, whether it's these redistricting measures that we've all had to deal with, some other, the ADA stuff that came around over the last few years with all the cities in the coastal areas, if there's a chance for litigation, there are unfortunately lawyers out there that are willing to take up and sue cities, and that's the unfortunate reality of it. These fees, these fines, I'm sorry, the fees will be subject to, again, massive litigation. You'll also have to, again, have a special election. If you, if somebody says that fee is not the lowest possible cost, you either have to implement the fee at that cost, at the lower possible cost, which might even be a loss. the fee at that cost, at the lower possible cost, which might even be a loss to the city, or you'll have to go to a vote of the people, and it will be a two-thirds vote. And again, you'll have to incur all those costs because you'll have 12 months in order to do so. So, what we're trying to do, we are, we have over 600 local government, we have almost 200, over 250 cities, counties, we have 150 special districts, we have working-class organizations, labor unions around the state, that, we have about 600 different organizations that I deal with on a daily basis, I'm the point person for the league on the campaign, and we're trying to make sure that we're creating a strong coalition. We know what we're up against, the, again, they paid $16 million in order to qualify this thing, they've said they'll raise between 70 and 100 million to run the campaign. What that means is, we're going to be able to raise probably somewhere between 30 and 50 million, probably closer to 30 than 50, quite frankly. But what that means is, we have to come together as a coalition, leaders such as yourself, being educated, engaged, informed, to speak to your communities. You are elected for a reason, they trust you. You're trusted spokespeople for your communities, you have to be able to convey the threat that this has for our cities. This will put all our cities, special districts and counties in a straitjacket. You will be spending most, your staff time will be spending most of their time doing studies for the next 10 years, and you'll be doing an insane number of, whether it's lawsuits or local elections over fee schedules for the next 10 years. So again, what we've done in the past too, we, right now, up in Sacramento, we have a record unprecedented budget deficit, 73 billion and counting. In the 90s and aughts, for people that don't remember, every time their budget up there in Sacramento got in a mess, they would reach down to local communities and raid our revenues that were generated here locally, and that were supposed to go to local services, and they would just take it to fix their budget. And they took it because they could. And what we did, we came together with the political capacity building that we talked about, we ran two initiatives in the aughts, and we now have a firewall between Sacramento and their ability to reach out and grab our money in our general revenue. They can no longer do that. That's why they have a record budget deficit, and they cannot raid any of our money locally. And they're dealing with that up there now. But it just goes to show you that even though, and we fought against some big organizations in those days as well, we've run eight initiatives, and we're 8-0. When we come together, again, big cities, small cities, inland, coastal, when we all come together, we see the threat, we see what's good for our communities, we stay informed and we get engaged, we can do big things, and we've always been successful. And that's what we're here trying to do right now, making sure that cities are informed. We're creating different campaigns for each and every city, what's appropriate to each and every city. I'm happy to come into your communities to help provide you collateral materials, information, presentations, help you as your leaders convey the message to your community, and to make sure that we're successful in November. We have a lot of work to do. And again, we're up against some very well-funded people that are going to spend, again, 100 million to make sure that they can get out of taxes and fees for themselves. And again, you can always tell what, you know, when these initiatives are qualified, the funding is what it's really about. And who it's about is rich corporations and rich developers trying to get out of their responsibility when they're dealing with us in our local communities. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the dais? Any questions?
I want a message to Mr. Malinak's, actually, on a whole different matter, I need you to call me. Absolutely. So, I usually have business cards, but I don't tonight.
I'm glad to get a hold of you.
But I've got a bunch of numbers here that I'm going to pass down to somebody, and they're going to see that you get it, and I'll wait to hear from you so I can call you back.
I will call you tomorrow.
Thank you for the efforts that you're doing. I was around when, in the 90s, and I remember several of these things where they
Absolutely.
They came down and raided mitigation fees and whatnot. So, yeah, a lot of yelling went on in this very room.
And I remember that. And again, it really came down to, when we all work together, we can accomplish great things.
Well, thank you for your efforts, sir.
Thank you very much.
Just the name, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act is really an oxymoron. It's very suspicious.
I would say it's either a Trojan horse or a bait and switch. But what will happen is, the process will be, in late June or early July, we'll get a proposition number, and then the Attorney General and lead analysts will, they will not be, it will not be called that at that point. But both sides are trying to, you know, inform the public on their messaging, and they're using that bait and switch type of title.
Any questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution that's presented before us.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Madam Currie, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Protem Soto.
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo.
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero.
Aye.
And Mayor Patino.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Malinak.
Thank you very much. I look forward to working with all of you.
Yes.
Councilmember Cordero, I will be calling you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next item is the conceptual review of a proposed downtown redevelopment by the Vernon Group on the city-owned parcels, and Assistant City Manager Chun Wu will be giving the presentation. There you go.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. This is a conceptual review for the redevelopment efforts in our downtown. And we've been working closely with the Vernon Group, and we have members of the Vernon Group here today, and we are here to provide you some conceptual drawings and to invite any feedback. Just as a matter of a quick background as to how we got here, 2020, we worked with the Chamber of Commerce to issue a request for proposal for development on some city parcels. And you can see a site plan that's adjacent to the intersections of Main and Broadway that includes Pearlman Park, the parking lot adjacent to the old Mervins, also the southeast corner, which is the plaza for the Firefighters Memorial. So we have these opportunities adjacent to Main and Broadway. They total, really, just about four acres. It's not a lot of land, but it's land that's owned by the city that we're trying to leverage and to really completely transform the city's downtown. And so, the Vernon Group have proposed a concept, they were selected as a development partners, and we've been working with them on really refining the remaining aspects of the overall development project. There was a development agreement that was approved for Lot 3. Lot 3 is the Alvin Newton Apartments with the Firefighters Memorial, that's a southeast corner. So the city council was able to review that and also approve that project. We are working with the Vernon Group on a DA that covers all of the parcels. This is due to a couple of reasons. Anytime the city is intending to dispose of city properties, we are subject to State Surplus Lands Act. And State Surplus Lands Act requires that these city-owned properties be designated for affordable housing. So there's a 25% affordable housing requirement for properties identified for disposition by the city. And in working with the Vernon Group, they had a desire to have one project that includes all the affordable units, but in order to do that, there has to be one development agreement that covers the entire site. We've had conversations with state HCD about this particular topic. There are some potential concerns about having one development agreement, concerns about timing, performance measures. So those are still some details we're working with the Vernon Group on, but all in all, this is still an exciting project for the city. We've been working well with the Vernon Group, and again, we're about to go into some slides that show some concepts of what would transform the city's center. So we'll start with this slide, and you can see some of the outlines of proposed buildings and plaza areas. The proposal for the city-owned parcels mostly includes new residential units, ground-floor commercial uses, retail and restaurants, and plazas and open spaces. And again, this is all within a pretty compact area. And so this is higher in intensity, higher in density, but really making the best use of every square feet that we have that's available. This is an isometric plan, you can, this kind of a bird's eye view. And to kind of orient yourself, at the top of the drawing is a proposal for Lot 2, which is the northeast corner of Main and Broadway. And you can see just the residential uses, there will be, it's proposed that the residential buildings are mostly five to six-story in height. But in addition to that, there are plazas and open spaces that are carved out, so you can see some of the areas where you, where there are some trees. And this would be adjacent to Lincoln and the former Mervins Building. And so, all the spaces in between the buildings are really intended as gathering spaces and plazas. This is just another top-down view. Even though we're working with pretty limited space, we're trying to design as many parking spaces as we can. And so, in, for a couple of these lots, the design would be a podium-style structure with parking on the ground floor and residential uses above the parking.
Mr. Wu.
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, your question. So just quick, is that Lincoln or it's Broadway and Main Street, right? The one that...
Yes, the widest, yeah, the widest street you can see here, where you see the bridge, that's Broadway, and then it's the intersection with Main Street, and then there's Lincoln, that's a little bit to the north.
And then I saw that the building on the upper left side is what is right now formerly Fallas Building, that's Lot Number 5.
Yeah, the larger structure with the parking spaces, that's the existing parking lot where we hold our Farmer's Market.
Okay, and so I see that right on the, well, my right side of the Lot 5, I see some trees, that is a street right now, is the plan of the one that is by Mikado. So that's the idea is to make it a walking path, is that?
Yeah, so the part of the drawing where there are some trees, that is Lincoln, and so if you can envision Lincoln but extending into that area that's adjacent to the old Mervins, in fact, there is an existing plaza now, it's just not utilized very much. There are some hardscape and some planters, but the idea is to introduce new commercial uses to truly activate the space so that there are additional uses, in addition to my restaurant, to really invite people to come out and to stay there and use the open space and plazas. In addition, there's a connection that will connect to the Heritage Walk, and the existing Heritage Walk would be refreshed with new hardscape, new sidewalks, new landscaping. So that's really the hub of the new residential and commercial uses. Again, any space that's in between the proposed buildings are intended for pedestrian activity and gathering.
And I ask this because I see there's a path running from Maya behind Escobar's Restaurant that I'm aware that businesses on West Main Street, we had that conversation before, a little bit worried about traffic, that because they, some of their supplies are delivered from the back doors. So will, the idea is to keep it open so vehicles can come in and out. Is that right?
Yeah, so, Councilmember Escobedo, right now, this particular drawing shows a structure in what we consider the parking lot of the Raphony Building. That's Lot 4, and currently in our discussions with Vernon Group, that's considered a future option. And so, it's, we do not anticipate any construction in that area in the near future. That's really a future area that's been identified after the completion of Lots 1, 2, and 3.
So I just want to bring it up because, you know, just keep it on, on you guys' radar that was kind of like the feedback I receive, and so, yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. These are additional elevations and renderings. Again, these are multi-story structures to accommodate a higher number of residential units. And just as an estimate, the residential count, again, we mentioned the surplus lands act, 25% affordable, the rough residential unit count is in the 600 range, and so if you have 25% of an additional 600 residential units, that's about 150 affordable residential units. But this is another drawing, and this is a drawing of what would be Heritage Walk that's refreshed. And so, again, there are many ways to design or redesign Heritage Walk, but again, the intention is to introduce patio spaces, gazebos, landscaping in a way that would help people feel comfortable in being there and visiting that location. This is kind of another view of the plaza space. Again, this is the, what, the parking lot adjacent to the old Mervins where we hold Farmer's Market, there will be, and this is what we call Lot 1, and there will be a new structure, again, on the ground, there'll be parking in a podium style, and, but there are also creative ways to create plaza spaces on the upper levels. And so this particular concept shows the pedestrian bridge across Broadway connecting to an upper-level plaza, then coming down in what they call Spanish steps onto a lower-level plaza area, so that there are really multiple dimensions to the future open spaces that Moving to Lot 2, this is the Pearlman Park site, and this is the site that's been identified for a future affordable housing project. This is just a ground-floor view, again, the, on the ground floor, there would be a parking lot there, and with a lobby at the corner of Main and Broadway, so that there'll be kind of a public entrance at the corner and a parking lot for the residents. This particular layout, the current count is 75 parking spaces. There, it is, this project does include a proposed count of 150 apartments, so it'd be 75 spaces for 150 apartments. We've been working with Vernon on trying to accommodate as many parking as we can, but this particular project would be dependent on adjacent parking nearby, including the parking structures on the south side of Main Street that serves... Elevations, again, residential units on the upper floors, ground floor, so even though it's a podium parking on the ground floor... So even though it's, it's a podium parking on the ground floor, on the exterior, there are ways to kind of dress it up and to make it not just appear like a, a parking structure. More elevations for the proposed project on Lot Two.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Thank you. With that project, you mentioned that the first level would be parking? And, okay, yeah, because I got, I got the impression that it was going to be commercial on the bottom and then get housing? Or just going to be for this project particularly, it's just going to be how, parking and then housing?
Yeah, Councilmember Escobedo, this particular project is, since it's the affordable project for the overall downtown plan, it, it only includes residential uses. But all the other buildings is a mixed-use format with ground floor commercial. This is the only one that's not.
Oh, thank you.
This is an elevation, this is, if you were looking at the building on, you know, you're probably standing in the middle of the intersection of Main and Broadway, looking northeast. And then this is another view of that building from, if you're standing on, on Main Street. And we also, I believe we also have the architect here from RRM that has contributed to many of these renderings. This is not so much talked about. This is actually a, a rendering of a future building on the Boot Barn location. The Boot Barn location is not, is not a city-owned site. But Vernon Group has been working with the property of the Boot Barn property. And I'll just note that there's, there's an existing lease of, as you know, Boot Barn is, is in a new location on Betaravia. And the, the existing location at Main and Broadway, that lease is scheduled to end sometime later this year. And the, that owner is in discussions with Vernon Group for redevelopment. So this is just a, a rendering of a concept proposal for that corner. This concludes staff's presentation. I know that Vernon Group is also here, and they also have some slides to share.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Wu? Soto?
I do, Madam Mayor. My, one of, well, actually, can I wait until after I see the presentation of Vernon Group? Okay, I'll, I'll do that, maybe they'll be answered.
Any questions? Okay, then we'll have the Vernon Group give their presentation.
It's the universal sign. I must say I'm sad I didn't get the boot memo I wrote. Wore the wrong shoes tonight, could have had the cowboy hat.
I know.
I almost went back out to my truck. But it is great to see the spirit and character of this city shine through. Tonight, my name is Scott Martin. I'm a principal architect, urban designer with RRM Design Group. We've been working with the applicant, the Vernon Group, who's also here tonight. I want to clarify a couple of things Chung said. We have not done all the architecture. So I'll talk a little bit about architecture, but we've done a decent amount of master planning in some of the architecture for the area. So we'll get a little more into details. Hopefully I can answer some of your questions. But we just, we had a quick presentation, Chung said about 10 minutes or so.
Go ahead.
If I talk too long, interrupt me, because I've got that tendency. We're going to briefly talk about the site, about downtown specific plan, our history, how we got here, building design, public spaces, and then we're happy to answer any questions. It was 2020 when we first drew a site plan for this area. That was in response to your RFP that the Chamber and yourself put out. It looks not like this anymore. It continues to change and evolve and, and grow over time. And we actually think for the better through your own council's input, through Planning Commission's input, through Citizen Advisory Group's input. We think we've, we think we've made a better project along the way. It's still not done, and there's still many hurdles to go. I thought Chung did a great job of walking you through this to answer a specific question. Yes, we're proposing that Lincoln come down and not go through, lead you right into a large plaza, a large people space as Lincoln comes from Main South and then turns to, to head out to the, to the west. Other than that, most of the infrastructure, the street system, is in place, and we are building off of the public realm that is, is already there. The focus, though, is really on these urban spaces. It's such a, it's such a unique paradigm to, to talk about, how to create urban space out of what is now, well, largely parking lots. And I want us to keep that in mind and think about that as we go through this tonight and have, have a dialogue. When I drove by tonight, I drove by the firefighter memorial because I became so attached to the Newtons and think about it all the time. But I sat in front of what was Fallas and just looked at the empty parking lots that were around here. And, you know, it's interesting, I'll talk a little bit about the specific plan and its, its desire and its imagery through this. I, I helped work on the specific plan. When I was an intern at RRM, I did these sketches, drawing six-story buildings in Santa Maria. It had to be early 2000s, I can't remember the exact date, before we even got to use computers and fun stuff. So it's exciting to come back and now be a part of, of that, the projects that are happening. Your city, your staff, the community gave a lot of input and desire on what the, the specific plan wanted to see happen in this area. And it is change, and change is hard, it can be jarring, but it is thought out, it is implementable. There are whole chapters and sections that are kind of boring in the specific plan that talk about how to implement these sort of housing projects in this area. I know I saw Mayor Patino there. I was at the Santa Maria Valley Housing Conference just a couple of weeks ago, and it was great to hear from Vandenberg, from the hospital. Not only are we in a housing crisis, but we're in a police crisis. We are looking for things to do and places for people. And that is the downtown vision. That is what's in the specific plan. That's what it talks about, is this idea of housing. It's been, just a shame tonight to listen to parking challenges throughout the city. If you look in the specific plan, you'll note that in the downtown specific plan, there are over 5,000 parking spaces. On just Lot One and Two, One, Two, and Three, there's over 1,000 parking spaces. I ask you all, when you drive home tonight, to drive by those and see how occupied they are. There's people struggling with housing out at Pacific Crest and other places because their son and daughter can't move out of the house because there's not enough available housing. And so they're parking their extra car and wanting to widen their driveway, when the real challenge is, we have a bunch of empty parking right here downtown and no housing. The goal of the specific plan, the vision that was described, was bringing people to the parking, to the services. There's a great synergy, you can read 100 studies on mixed-use parking. The people who park during the day aren't always the people who park at night, and vice versa. If you are able to live where you work and eat and dine, you use the car less and less. We don't have a lot of examples of that here yet, but we're hoping we can start to bring some of those. There, there is a great, I hope you've all read the specific plan. It's a great vision for how people live in urban space. It's a change, and we all need to, to be ready for that. It's been a process going through this. We originally drew some sketches, like I said, back in 2020 of what this could be. We are honored to be part of the selection group with the Vernons at, at the time. Because sometimes the public process could be a little slower than the private process. The Vernons have gone out and now looked at some private development in, in its place. The Mervyn's Building, Fallas, it's now being processed in construction documents to actually build the Heritage Walk lofts. Same goes for Lot Three and Alvin Newton. There's money and builders available to help not only the memorial and everything else, but also the actual housing to get people downtown and take advantage of some of the parking that, that is available. Chung mentioned the Boot Barn and some other potential private-public opportunities that create even more of a space. As, as mentioned previously, Lot Two, that is not RRM's architecture. There's almost too much to do for just one architect. So we're excited that other partners are being brought in. I don't want to take credit for other people's work. But there is an exciting opportunity here with you. When you put all your affordable housing in a building, there's an opportunity for more amenities, for more services, for more available... If you distribute it everywhere, it's really hard to provide extracurricular activities, after-school activities, daycare, career training. Everything else that should go into an affordable housing project is much easier to do when you get 100 units together as opposed to doing it all over the place. And you can ask your local people self-help housing or housing authority in, in the area, and they'll tell you the exact same thing. We're excited to be working on Lot One. We are looking to park everything per the specific plan. The specific plan was the, the impetus document that created the parking studies, that looked at parking ratios. And we think as long as everybody's okay walking and crossing a street or two, we think you can park this product, these, all these projects completely in the downtown area, which is wonderful. We've had some great talks about building design and architecture, and how much color, and not enough color, and more tile. And I think it's resulted in some great architecture. I think we're excited about seeing some of these projects go through. We've had some great feedback, not only from your council, but also from, from Planning Commission, really about being, being rooted in place, being contextual, yet being accommodating for a need that's out there and, and something different. This is not single-family housing, but not all of us want that. Some of us do, but not all of us. So this is, this is definitely something different. This is a focus where you're not going to have a big yard and a garage. Instead, you're going to have an opportunity to walk right downstairs to cafes and dining and coffee shops, to hear musicians play guitar in the plaza on a Sunday afternoon, to meet your coworkers for lunch right outside the door as opposed to ever get in your car. So it, it's really much more focused on those interstitial spaces, those places between the buildings. I told these guys, "Don't show a bunch of big white boxes, what are you doing?" And they still sent it anyways. So I guarantee you, none of that architecture will actually be big white boxes. I think you can see in some of the most successful urban spaces, the buildings themselves become almost backdrops to the space. So whether it is the Spanish Steps, whether it is the Heritage Walk, it is those colorful, vibrant people places that we are looking to create. It's not a big green park. I don't think downtown's the right spot for that, but I do believe these urban places, these public spaces, they need people. People come with housing. Housing comes downtown with these projects. And we're excited about the opportunities to bring some of that. Doesn't mean you can't have any parking, we got to find ways. This is like the most expensive parking you can build when you start putting it under a building and in between and under. But you create liner shops, you create commercial space, cafes all around that, and you hide it. My goal is when someone drives by Broadway in another 10 years that they don't see a sea of empty parking spaces, but instead they see people and plazas and places they want to go. We're, I, I think Chung summarized it quite well. We're excited about Lot Two and what's happening there, but really looking forward to Lot One as the next sort of anchor development. It fills the hole, the donut hole, if you will, between Heritage Walk lofts, that's Mervyn's or Fallas, what's happening at Alvin Newton, which is on the corner, the existing mall, Lincoln Street and, and West Main. So like to see Lot One start to move forward. Beyond that would be Lot Four, as those start to become real anchors and, and places for downtown. We have looked at services and everything along West Main. Those business owners have been great. Heritage Walk is designed to, to accommodate cars, not to be a street. I want to say that very differently, but accommodate loading, deliveries, trash pickup, food trucks, vendors who want to come in and a place to do Farmer's Market. It's not a street for cars, but it is a place that can accommodate street, or accommodate cars. So there's a little bit different nuances in there, but it will still allow for what happens now. You just won't be able to park back there. I don't know, Vernon Group, if you wanted to add to that, or if there... I don't know if your questions are for me or them, or both.
Soto, Ms. Soto had questions.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. And thank you, Mr. Wu, for, for the thorough presentation as well. And apologies that these questions were already asked and answered. But in, in the presentations, we, we saw the, the redevelopment of the downtown corridors. And I know Councilmember Escobedo mentioned the impact to the businesses that are alongside West Main Street. And I know that you all right now are having conversations with Boot Barn or the, the owner, right, of, of that, of that building. And so I know that there are other buildings attached to Boot Barn, like the shoe store, the Ganada Shoe Store, a couple of other shops. The Old Bricks Restaurant is there. And so does that include those businesses as well?
The, the discussion with Boot Barn is literally, it's, it's the corner piece. It's just the Boot Barn and the parking lot. It used to be an old bank or some, there's like, yeah, so you can see the drive-through. There's an entry off, off of Main, and it comes out to Broadway. That owner is most engaged. There's these imaginary parcel lines between certain buildings. There's actually three on Boot Barn that you don't even see. So it, it is a, Boot Barn has enough significance to get a project that, that can go. For some of those other shops, they're more than welcome to redevelop right now under the existing specific plan. They're allowed the same things we're proposing, to create a project with enough... It's really hard to do one or two units. It just doesn't make a lot of sense financially, there's, there's no payback. When you could get enough site that you could do a real project, I bet you'll see some of those happen in the future. Right now, that's all on the public side that is, or private side that is not publicly owned.
Got it. And so then my next question is tailored to city staff. I'm assuming that the new structures are, are, are not... The current structures are not going to blend in with the new developments that go on, go up. And so is the city going to be offering any type of incentives or monetary grants to business owners along the West Main corridor so that they can give the front shops a facelift? So, you know, it, it all comes together nicely?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Soto, I, I think that there ought to be a comprehensive economic development effort for West Main, for all of downtown. And so, yes, I mean, we're working closely with the Vernon Group, but that's really kind of one part of the overall puzzle of revitalizing our downtown. It's, it's also making sure that the existing businesses have what they need. It's making sure that we have the right marketing and branding. And so whatever tools and strategies that we have, I think we need to have all of those conversations so that whatever efforts and energy we put into our downtown benefits the new users and the existing users.
Thank you. And I see that folks from the Chamber, representatives from the Chamber are here as well. And so I, I think a part of concerns that I've heard from, from residents have been, you know, the, the potential of, of some of the current businesses getting, getting pushed out because of the type of new development that's going in. We've seen that happen in other communities. And so I'd be really interested, not that you have to give us an answer today, but I'd be really interested also to have more of a dialogue with city staff, with my colleagues up here on the dais, as to what we can do to ensure that we protect the current businesses alongside West Main Street and that, you know, that they're, they are also able to thrive as these new developments are taking place in, in our downtown. Another question that I have, if I may. I know that in the, in the PowerPoint presentations, the images were beautiful. And one of those images really showcased like some beautiful... And one of those images really showcased like some beautiful benches alongside, you know, some of the, the open corridors that, that you all are, are, are looking to, to include. And so I know that on Lincoln Street, where the Maya's Restaurant is, there used to be benches alongside there because that, that is a historic walkway for the city if I, if I'm not mistaken. But those benches at one point were removed when I worked there because of homelessness. And so I just want to make sure that we don't remove benches moving forward because of homelessness.
Yeah, so Madam Mayor, Councilmember Soto, just to address that particular topic, I think when there are new residents introduced to downtown or additional businesses, there would be more eyes on, eyes on the street per se. And so there'll be better surveillance just from visitors and customers and residents. Also, earlier this year, we were working with the chamber on a potential business improvement district. And so that, that's a conversation that, that we'll, we'll likely have more later this year into next year. The establishment of a, a P-bid that would allow for a mechanism to collect funding to pay for services such as increased security or landscape maintenance. So again, that, that's just another tool in the toolbox to address some of these concerns that we have.
Thank you. And then my last question. I saw that, I think it was Lot Three, that I think it was named Alvin Newton. So I'm assuming the conversations with the Newton family have been going well. I know that at one point or another, there were concerns about the memorial that was going to be placed there. And so can you all give us some context as to what has transpired in the last couple of months?
Yes. So we've met closely with the stakeholder group and involving the family and in pretty specific aspects of the project design. And so for Lot Three, the Alvin Newton Apartments, there was a plaza that was carved out. And so that plaza is really for, for the firefighters' memorial and for, and for Mr. Newton. And so that conversation has, we had good conversations with the stakeholder groups. There are still some final details to, to sort out, such as the, the proposed piece that's going to be within the plaza. But to, to the Vernon Group's credit, they've set aside land on, on a project site that's already small to begin with to make sure that there is adequate memorial space and a gathering space to honor the family and to make, make the most of the, of our relationship with the stakeholders.
Thank you. And
Go ahead.
Last question. I promise. I know that we also, there were also some community members who shared with us their concern about how the redevelopment of downtown may impact the parking at the church here on the corner of Cook and Broadway. Has, have, have those conversations and those concerns been resolved with those residents and with the church?
Councilmember, we have ongoing conversations with the church. I'll note that that part of the parking lot, we, we do not have a proposed structure for that area. So that area remains available for parking that's adjacent to the church.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Escobedo?
Well, more than a question, it's just an invitation.
Okay.
I've been, I've been in close contact with businesses on West Main Street. And not, not only the ones that are close to the project, but it's been, you know, of a wide, wide interest from all of them. And they have concerns. And I think it's, it's important to keep that communication as we do with the, with the, with the church, as we do with the ones that are really close by. To really, I think that the more information that we have about a project, the less uncertainty and less rejection that, that it will get. So there were some misconceptions. I remember the chamber, there was a meeting and there were some, as I say, misconceptions of parking as that, that, that walkway. They thought I was just going to shut it down from behind. And so things like that can be misunderstood. I think it's important to keep the dialogue and work together, not only for the ones that are close by, which are, I would say they should be the priority, but also throughout the, the West Main Street corridor that especially since they are, are small local businesses and, you know, uncertainty is, it's, you know, they got their business going on. And on top of that, dealing with this uncertainty can be really hard on them. So looking forward to, for you guys to, you know, keep working with local businesses on getting this going.
Well, there's no, there's no question. This is a huge, huge change for downtown. And I just, it's just going to be beautiful. I know at one time, we had a program in the city where I think the city did 50% and businesses on the West Main side where we did facades. And I, I think that would be really important because this is going to be a beautiful project and we want to bring everybody up, I think, to that level and to that caliber. And I think that probably can be done very inexpensively. But if we could do that, I think that would be really appropriate at this time. Mr. Vernon, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Yes, Madam Mayor. To, to kind of address some of the questions, we really look at this as the spark to kind of ignite the redevelopment. And so this, this development, we're looking at a total of, of $250 to $300 million of investment that we're looking to do downtown. So we think that that's big enough to make it so the other private owners, the other real, the other property owners are looking at that saying, "Hey, someone's invested in here. We see a lot of activity going on here and, and now we want to invest in our business." To address one of the concerns about the back of the house and drive access down Heritage Walk, the way we see it is that's going to become a very pedestrian-friendly area. Currently, there's, there's, that's, that's back of house. That's where cars go and deliver and all that. We see Main and Broadway, mainly Main, let's say, going along those businesses. That's very car-centric. We hope, our, our hope and vision of this is ultimately the, the other businesses in that area recognize that. And they kind of turn around the way their businesses face. The pedestrian-facing side is facing Heritage Walk. And the car side is where Main Street is, where there's a Caltrans right away and deliveries are coming that way. To that point, we will maintain kind of certain access on certain times of the day. So let's say some safety mechanisms will be in place, like ballards or something that we can remove. And we can work as the property owners as when, when delivery can take place. So we don't have a, you know, an evening event going on and delivery trucks trying to drive down, down that. So we'd limit the access a little bit more. We'd, we'd share it with everybody and that would be in collaboration with the city. One, one of the big, the big things that, I, I know parking is a very big, important thing here in the city. One of the things that we wanted to talk about is with Lot Two, we're proposing approximately 0.5 parking spaces per unit. The idea was originally, and in the RFP that we originally submitted, we had zero parking on that space due to kind of just financial engineering, the whole project. That's one more reason to make this all feasible is, is getting affordable housing finance mechanisms in place to help finance Lot Two. We, we heard the city and kind of tried to address the concern of getting parking there. And so we, we essentially changed an entire, the entire first floor to make it podium parking as opposed to residential or commercial space. That still only gives us a 0.5 to 1 ratio. And so we're, we're asking kind of to have that consideration that we're still allowed to use the parking structure to the south. For Lots Four and Lots One, we're looking at just, just complying with the downtown-specific plan. Obviously, as us, we're, as stakeholders for the rest of the development, parking and success of this project is as important to us as it is for, for the city. We have, we have to guarantee this project. We're, we're tying our, our livelihoods to the success of this project. So we're not taking parking lightly. If parking was cheap and free, I would love to have five spaces per unit. You know, unfortunately, it's downtown. And right now, we see what a, a high parking ratio creates. It creates inactivity. It's dead at night. You have homeless encampments. Homeless people, I know on the Boot Barn, they've had problems with, with homeless camping out, starting fires on transformers, shutting down power, you know. And so by developing, we, we really hope to put eyes on the street. And, and it being the spark to ignite what Santa Maria can identify as the downtown. And so, so our big ask is, is really that, that we can recognize that, that we're trying to drive our development agreement forward for, for the business men in the room, men and women in the room. We're, we're moving forward right now at risk. We don't have a development agreement. We've, everything you're seeing besides the private stuff and, and the development agreement for Lot Three, that, that's the only thing that we have under contract essentially with the city. We're looking to invest a lot more money in this project, but really we need to have a development agreement in place so we can dive deeper into the architecture, into more studies, into presenting something other than white boxes, which again, that's just, that's just kind of a spatial thing that we're doing. So, so don't think that that's the, you know, we're going for this modern, white, stark Spanish style. That's just so we can fit everything on site and just see what we kind of have. But essentially, we really try to take, make an emphasis on the, on the, the people areas. And, and really, that's, that's how we see this, this downtown redevelopment taking place. So, so my ask to the, to the council is, is that in the next, I mean, I know it's every two weeks. So within the next two weeks to a month, we'd like to have, you know, kind of have some urgency to get the development agreement in place and, and in front of the council as soon as possible.
Thank you. Is that possible, Mr. Wu, to have that in place?
Madam Mayor, we will work closely with this, with other city staff and other departments to move forward with a development agreement. We use this meeting a little bit as a, as a preview to give the council a reminder and a snapshot of the overall project. And it was good to hear your questions and to hear some of your comments. Certainly, the development agreement would, would come back and we'll do so and work diligently to, to bring that back as soon as we can. There are some kind of details to work out. It's, this is a, this is an agreement with a developer that would for city property that we currently own. And it would be, there'll be, that agreement would be in place for a period of, of many, several years while, while construction takes place. But we want to do so with our best foot forward. And we are absolutely excited. And, and it's, it's that balance of, you know, making sure that we, we still have that energy and excitement and making sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's and making, and make sure that this is a development agreement that, that works for both the city and our development partner.
Any other comments from here?
No, I've been involved with this project since I was on the Planning Commission and then it followed me into the City Council. So I've really gotten to see this in detail at the Planning Commission level, which I really enjoyed. So I think it's turned out really great. I remember the first initial meetings about the architecture and what we wanted to, to look like. So we've made a lot of progress. I know it's been slow and painful, but we appreciate you guys sticking with it. Thank you. And especially thank you for listening to the, the firefighters and the Alvin Newton family. That was really important.
Thank you.
If I, just one more thing. I know that this was a concern, kind of the individual ownership of condos. And because of some of the constraints that we have with Lot Three, we weren't able to do it there. We're not able to do it on Boot Barn. But Lots One and Lot Four, where we have parking underneath, those are things where we're looking at applying a condo map and having that be as a possibility as part of this development. I know that that was a concern to Councilmember Escobedo in the, in the past. And so I just wanted to kind of point that out that, that we're, we're looking to incorporate that on the parcels where it's physically possible. You, you mentioned Lot, what, what number of the lots? Lot One and Lot Four would be the possible ones. And we're, I mean, right now, the way we're looking at it is basically doing it on both, having that possibility.
Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I just want to say that we really appreciate the efforts that the Vernon organization has taken toward addressing some of our questions and concerns, going not only with the, with the memorial, but all, all the things. I, I know that there's been a, a series of, of questions and requests and desires on, on all sides of the fence. And we really appreciate the fact that you hear us. Usually it's the other way around with somebody always wants something that we either can't give or is going to cost us thousands and hundreds of thousands of dollars in some cases to provide. And, and your willingness to work more closely with some of, some of our personnel makes the life a lot easier for the five of us. And we thank you very, very much.
Our pleasure.
Okay, so next steps?
Next steps, we'll prepare the development agreement. And that will ultimately, there's some consultation with, with the council. And so we'll, we'll begin to get that ready.
Okay, great, great. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to acknowledge that we, we did receive a written public comment from Teresa Paredes with the Maya Restaurant in favor of the redevelopment of Lot One.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I guess we've got all the questions and you guys have all the answers. So we're looking forward to seeing that going up very quick. Thank you. Good night. The last regular business item is the review of the financial report for the third quarter ending March 31st, 2024, and the adoption of a resolution approving third-quarter amendments. Okay, and presentation? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This will be a fairly brief presentation for the third-quarter financial report for the current fiscal year ending March 31st, 2024. And it will be followed by consideration by the council of just a couple of budget amendments for your potential approval. So we'll start by looking at the economic outlook, look at general fund, measure U and enterprise funds, fiscal health, and then the proposed budget amendments. So not much really great news when it comes to economic outlook, but at the same time, there is no recession. In first quarter of 2024 calendar year, the economy slowed down to 1.6% from the growth rate of 4.9% in quarter three of the previous year and 3.4% of quarter four in the previous year. So there is some slowdown. The unemployment rate remains very steady at 3.8%. And it's been in that very narrow range since August of 2023, ranging from 3.7% to 3.9%. The US inflation remains fairly steady at 3.5%. And the Federal Reserve will continue to do their rate hikes down to, try to lower it down to 2% into 2026. So on the general fund, the major categories that contribute to the revenues of the general fund are listed here. The property tax is doing just a little bit better than in the previous year at 7.5% higher revenues or $990,000 than last year. And that meets as our expected budget. The sales tax is 5.8% lower than last year, which equates to about $1.4 million lower than last year in dollar terms. And that is somewhat of a concerning trend. We definitely see a slowdown in sales tax. A lot of that for us contributes to the car sales and the high interest rates. So our projections into the next few years will be slow growth in sales tax. The transient occupancy tax is also trending lower. It's 7.2% lower than last year or $200,000. Licenses and permits are also lowering last year by 10.5% or $325,000. And that's really contributed primarily due to the activity in the planning department. So citywide staffing trends for the general fund is 6.7% under budget through Q3, primarily due to vacant due to vacancies in the Police Department. And then in contracts, we are also 2.2 million below budget, but that's really because of the timing of the General Plan project. So that funding would be carried forward under the existing contract into the next fiscal year, as the work continues. So this here shows Measure U Fund, budget, and actuals through Quarter Three. You can see that our revenue is pretty much tracking right on target for Measure U, and expenditures budgeted for this year were $40 million. We had $22 million with primary difference there stemming from some capital improvement projects for the Fire Department. Enterprise funds, our water and wastewater, are doing really well. The water revenue has increased by 16% or $6.4 million. The expenses are trending higher this year, primarily due to the Central Coast Water Authority payments that are required by the state contract, and then operating expenses are actually under budget for that fund as well, due to vacancies and then some of the timing on maintenance and contractual agreements. Solid waste is also doing well in terms of revenues exceeding expenditures, and they also have some operating expenditure savings of $3.7 million. The Transit is continuing on track, continuing to work on raising their Fairbuck's ratio. It's currently at 9.4% or $446,000 collected from the ridership, which is just $22,000 higher than last year. So just a couple of proposed budget amendments. One comes from the City Manager's Office. This was for funding of a confidential technician in IT services of the City Manager's Office. There is no current funding requested for this year. There is funding that exists. However, if approved, this position would cost the General Fund $94,700 over a year period. The next ask is within a business equipment fund, but it's really a need from the Police Department, and that is a request to accelerate the purchase of a crime lab full-spectrum imaging system. There were some funds collected of some $42,000 within a business equipment fund, but because of the functionality of the current equipment, it's asked to be accelerated. And so we are requesting to appropriate an additional $58,000 from the General Fund, which is available to be covered by salary savings within the Police Department. And that concludes my presentation for today.
Any questions from the council?
Yes. I do have a question.
Mr. Aguilar Hernandez?
I believe, or, I guess, the confidential technician IT services, wasn't that already a budgeted item because it is to replace someone that we lost, an employee?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez. So we have some vacancies in IT right now, and this position is being proposed to come in to supplement the work that IT needs done to really manage the network, do the tracking of equipment. We have a number of new machines coming, computers coming in, and that person would work specifically on that, plus handle the billing, all those back office kinds of things that happen in IT.
Right, but my question is, isn't there vacancies already? Why do we have to add an additional position?
The vacancies are technical positions, so you're looking, I believe it was like our cybersecurity analyst, so they're higher-level types of positions. This is, like I say, a clerical support position in IT.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The equipment that is requested by the, it's the crime lab, can we get a sense of what it's, you know, for people that is watching us, what is that for?
Thank you for that, Councilman Escobedo. So the crime lab right now is in need of a machine. We have a machine that analyzes fingerprints. That machine is starting to show signs of failure to where fingerprints, when they're analyzed, actually have striations in the photographs that it's taking, which causes problems for us when we go into court and now we have to present evidence. And the fingerprints are barely legible at this point, so the machine is ready to go out at any minute. So, but this is ahead of schedule. I'm not exactly sure on when the rotation, when replacement was actually supposed to take place, but it's on the verge any day it could give out. So it's an expensive but much-needed piece of equipment.
So you would say that having an adequate machine would help you guys to, at the moment of creating this investigation and working on the case, well, basically to make the case for the city of Santa Maria, for the Police Department, that's going to enhance that ability?
Absolutely. It's a 100% need for that reason. Okay, thank you.
I have a question. How is this reflected in the budget that we're going to see in two weeks? Because the new budget's coming for approval, so why can't these items wait? And are they part of your budget already?
That I could not, they were, that I'm not sure about.
Thank you.
Might be a bad question for her.
Thanks, Jesse.
Mr. Posada.
So the idea right now is to, Police Department brought forward some items, and through the fact that they have some budget savings right now, the need is right now. So we'd like to go ahead and use those budget savings to acquire the piece of equipment now, as opposed to waiting for the budget process. There will be other items in the budget process for you to consider, but this one, we felt, was urgent enough to move it forward as quickly as possible.
Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Alex, is that using this money temporary and it will be replaced?
Yes.
So that we're just borrowing, so to speak?
We consider this a one-time purchase. What will happen with this, like any other piece of equipment, there'll be contributions made to the Equipment Replacement Fund, now with the new value of the machine. As Ms. Bradford mentioned, was that we collected some money, but not enough to make the change right now, and the machine is going out right now.
Okay, thank you.
What do we consider the life of the machine? Do you know, Commander?
Okay, that's fine. I heard the Commander say that it was ahead of schedule, right? So nobody knows when it's going to go out. It could be a month or two months. My question or my issue is, this is, the whole budget is coming before us. It sounds like they have some extra money and they want to spend it before the budget time, which I just, I'm not comfortable with because we are having the whole budget before us in two weeks. So I just, you know, why not just wait the two weeks? If it goes out, I understand, we'd have to order it. I don't know if two weeks is going to make a big difference for the lab.
But I thought he was just saying right now that a lot of this stuff isn't coming through. Yes, Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wouldn't feel comfortable waiting on such an equipment that, in particular, in terms of public safety, in two weeks, things can happen. And if we're not able to get those fingerprints and build a case, somebody can get away from, can get away from, with murder, how do you say it? Basically, get away with it. So I don't think that's something, a risk that personally, I wouldn't like us to go for. So in the case of the equipment, because it's falling right now and the importance of it, I would actually move to make the motion to add it. On regards to the position, I think that I would agree with moving, that item can be moved to the next budget, because that's not something that we need to get it done right away. But for this particular item, I think it's important to keep it there and make the adjustment.
I know that they're, and the reason they're asking for that position now is because some of the, they need someone to help on some of the computers right now because they are not operating like they should be on a daily basis, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And we do have an entire inventory of computers that are being waited, waiting to roll out, and that this position would be a key one to help inventory them, get them ready to go. So we think it's a key position.
So the other day, when I walked into your office and your computer was down, for how many hours?
It was down for the better part of the day.
Okay. It's not like if mine was down, that wouldn't really affect anyone, but for the, for our City Manager, it certainly would. Mr. Cordero, you had a comment?
I don't have anything else, Madam Mayor. Mr. Escobedo addressed what I was going to say.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Any requests to speak?
We do have one request to speak, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chirkov.
Madam Mayor, there's a lot back here. Can I have one more than three minutes, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So first, I'll start with a quarterly budget update. This meeting segment offers a crucial budget update.
Madam, Sergeant, can you get closer to your mic?
Yeah.
Thank you. I hope you got a pen, too, because there's a lot of numbers to write down. This meeting segment offers a crucial budget update emphasizing numerical data. Over the years, the city consistently projected budget shortfalls but ended up with surpluses. For instance, in 2021, the projected deficit of the General Fund was $4.4 million, which turned into a $4.9 million surplus, with funds divided among different accounts. Similarly, in 2022, a projected $1 million deficit transformed into a $23.6 million surplus, which was divided between the LEAF capital funds, Capital Fund and Unfunded Pension Liability Fund, leaving a $17.6 million LEAF balance. However, despite positive outcomes, the city still claims impending deficits. Furthermore, the Fire Department consistently underspends its budget due to specific expenses like the ladder truck procurement, training center costs, and fire administration renovation. In 2023, the Fire Department Measure U budget was underrun by $4.6 million. These items were never obtained or finalized, yet they remained in the 2024 Measure U budget. If you ask the chief today, these projects will not be completed in this cycle either, leaving a $6.3 million of unspent Measure U funds, leading to an additional carryover funds. And that's important, because we talked about this last meeting. At the current rate, if Measure U spending, of Measure U spending, Measure U will finish the year with about $10 million in unspent funds. Let me remind you that the council set aside only $3.6 million as a reserve in Measure U. The citizens, as you heard today, voted so that this money can be used, yet $10 million is still forecasted to be in excess of the set-aside reserve. This recurring trend highlights a discrepancy between forecasted deficits and actual financial outcomes, raising questions about budget management practices. Additionally, while the city accumulates funds across various accounts, essential service providers like your firefighters remain underpaid and without a contract, emphasizing the need for fair compensation and recognition of their contributions. Now on to the budget amendments. This is a budget amendment increase to the General Fund. Mr. Posada just said they're reallocating existing budget monies, but this report, this budget allocation, is an increase of $152,000 to the General Fund. And $95,000 of that is not even for this budget year. It's for the next budget you're going to discuss at the next council meetings. At two prior council meetings, City Hall proposed to permanently fund seven ARPA positions, funded through the end of this fiscal year. That's one of them. The one that they're asking you today is one of those positions, as Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez just referenced. Nowhere in this report does it reference this position. It's one of those ARPA positions. Why not? Why not? I have the agenda from March 16th, and the explanation of that position is the exact same from March 16th as it is in today's agenda packet, the exact same. It says, it was in the City Manager's Office, and it was, but now it's primarily being worked on IT projects. Twice, you told City Hall no, and to bring those temporary positions back for consideration during budget prep. Tonight, they are asking you to permanently fund one of those positions for the next two-year budget. Keep in mind, it's, like I said, it's funded through the current fiscal budget. It's also deceptive that it didn't reference ARPA. And why are you making budget amendments for a budget that hasn't even been prepared, presented, or discussed publicly? What's the whole point of the budget hearing? If we're just going to approve these things from January until now, and then when they put the budget together for you, they're going to have all these amendments that you voted for to put in there, and then you're going to be faced with the challenge of X-ing out these things you already approved, so that you can balance the budget. I would also like to encourage you to ask for the carryover funds from other funding sources to be identified in the forthcoming budget. You asked for carryover funds in the Measure U account to be identified in the budget, and it's appropriate for all carryover funds to be identified explicitly. They didn't get, and remember, I know they explained that this, that's one position, the $95,000 is to help out with these IT projects. Remember, you approved the $8 million Eden in HR project that added, I believe, 14 positions, and this was the seven more. They were only funded from ARPA. They were on the books, they were unfunded. You got ARPA funding, the American Rescue Plan funding, and that's how you funded these seven positions. That is supposed to expire at the end of this fiscal year, and now they're bringing it back to you again before budget prep. I see through it.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor, for the extra time.
Thank you, Mr. Chirkov.
I appreciate that.
Any questions, discussion?
If not, Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion
Mr. Escobedo.
To, well, recommend to receive and file the financial report, but in regards to the amendments, we can go back to the, to the request.
Mr. Watson, do we do these separately?
If the intent is to change what the proposal was, it would be appropriate to do them separately. Because again, receive and file doesn't require actually a vote. The only thing that requires a vote is the resolution.
So receive and file, make the motion to receive and file financial report for the third quarter ending March 31, 2024?
Is there a second?
It doesn't need a motion.
Oh, just.
Okay. Okay, receive and file, okay?
It's just the resolution.
Just the resolutions.
And Madam Mayor, I just wanted to remind that there was a motion from Councilmember Escobedo to approve the camera without the confidential technician position. Does that fail?
Yeah, we can go back, so I can write it as it is in the presentation.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah, I would like, my motion is to approve the amendments for the Police Department, the two items, and move to the, without the City Manager's Office technician position.
Second?
So just to clarify, for the record, the resolution will be amended to only include funding for the Police Department business equipment change, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Soto has stepped out. And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
I do have another request. If we can include, is it able, I guess, India, to include all carryover funds to be identified in the budget?
So we'll be bringing forth some recommendations and clarifications on policies regarding the carryovers. Generally speaking, if it has a contract and has an encumbrance, would be carried over because it's already obligated. And then the capital improvement program projects are usually multi-year, so those are typically our carryovers.
usually multi-year, so those are typically are carried forward as well.
But will we be able to get an explanation as to all the carryover funds in two weeks?
You will have, the presentation will include presentation of all the funds, including the capital improvement program. So all of those carryovers will be part of your presentation materials.
Thank you. I do also have another request. Is it possible to put the budget not to be the last item, so that we're not falling asleep and tired when we're talking about numbers? I don't know how we feel about that.
Or make it the only item? I think we haven't.
Yeah, is it the only item?
Yes, if, going over the upcoming agenda items, the others are pretty much consent and presentations. So most of the time was dedicated to the budget.
Okay, thank you.
And that's for the 21st meeting.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments, discussion, motions, nothing? Okay. Next item is the report from the interim city manager, Mr. Posada.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. So coming up for your May 21st meeting agenda, the, we have the potential for a closed session. That'll be announced a little later, kind of giving you updates. We have a proclamation for Public Works Week, Santa Maria Community Theater presentation, the homeless encampment response presentation. Public Works has a presentation on pavement management, always an interesting subject to see. There is a resolution coming forward on consent for public safety managers. The engineers' report for the landscape and lighting districts will be a public hearing. And then, as I said, the bulk of the council agenda will be dedicated to reviewing of the preliminary budget. On June the 4th, we have proclamation, a couple proclamations coming up, presentation by 3CE on the annual update, a presentation from, I'm sorry, I don't know what this one is, WWTP? Is that a chat thing?
Utilities, yes.
Treatment plant? There you go. Presentation on that from our utilities department. There'll be a consent item on the elections, consolidations, final approval of the CDBG action plan. PD has an item on military equipment use policy. There'll be some parking items for you, and then stormwater basin policy. We'll have to bring that to you, that has been kind of lurking around for about the last seven or eight years, maybe. And also talking about the presentations on Yeah. It's gonna be a busy next couple of months, I guess that's really what I'm getting at. One of the questions for the council to start thinking about into July, you do have a July 2nd meeting on the calendar, is that something that we can discuss later if the council wants to have that meeting? Or postpone it, or not have it and move it to the 16th meeting?
Are we able to vote now?
We will bring something back.
Yeah, we'll bring in agenda.
Next meeting.
Hey, we should do it on the 16th so we don't get all the complaints from the 4th of July.
Efficiency.
There'll be less of those.
I hope so.
There'll be less.
Okay, the next item is oral reports of council members, so let's start with you, Mr. Cordero.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The only thing that I attended was the student of the year for the Elks on behalf of the city. It was very well done, and some really highly qualified young people that are made a lot of money over there at the Elks in the way of scholarships. I also want to report out that, as everyone knows, I'm recovering from a home injury. And I just want to thank the public, that some of the people that I got messages from, not only from many of you, the city personnel, but I got some very nice messages from the public wishing you well. And I really did not expect that, and it was, I don't know if they got my phone number and address and whatnot, but they did. And I had some very warm feelings expressed, and I appreciate it all, and my recovery is working out quite well. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, happy to have you back, Mike, and your recording. And on April 18th, I attended the Santa Maria Valley Housing Summit, also attended Let's Get Out, Let's Get Loud, Bay Palm, really fun. Then on the 19th, I attended the 2024 Annual Strawberry Industry Appreciation Dinner. Oh, yeah, and Saturday the 4th, I had the privilege of being invited to present some recognitions to, to the festival New Sabi, which means Pueblo de la Lluvia, or People from the, From the Rain in Mexico. It was a great experience, a lot of dancing.
The one I couldn't find a parking place to go to, is that the one?
No, that was another one.
Oh, that was another one, okay. Speaking of parking.
Yeah, that was, that was a lot of fun, and really learning from, it was great. It was a lot of good time, good music, and thank you for the invitation to Fuerte Amigante. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aguilar Hernandez?
I attended the Econ Alliance Board Meeting, the Housing Summit on 4/18, 4/19, the Annual Strawberry Industry Appreciation Dinner. Ms. Escobedo was hosting the event, he was the emcee. Attended 423 Women Lawyers Association, 427, I attended the strawberry festival, and I did do the strawberry eating contest. I lost, but I had a great time eating strawberries. And I also attended COLAB the same evening, which is Coalition Labor of Agriculture and Business.
Thank you. April 18th, I had SB CAG meeting in the morning. I attended the Santa Maria Valley Housing Summit on the 19th. I attended the Annual Strawberry Industry Appreciation Dinner. On the 20th, my Mayor's Youth Task Force, we did serve Santa Maria, and I want to thank Mark Van de Kamp and Jason Stillwell. Sort of Carl Nielsen has sort of handed it off to them for this year, and they did a great job. On the 23rd, I went out to SpaceX for a tour with Mr. Posada, and attended also the Mayor's Forum at Vandenberg. On the 24th, I attended the Santa Barbara County Economic Roundtable. On April 25th, I had the Joint Cities County Affordable Housing Task Force, and the Strawberry Festival on April 26th, where I got to release the pinata that looked like a big taco. On April 27th, I attended the Friends of Waller Park, where they honored Mary Lou Lowe's. And on the 28th, I attended the California Alliance of Local Elected Meetings. From April 30th through the 1st, I took my Mayor's Youth Task Force down to Southern California. We attended the Getty Museum, we attended UCLA, the Broad Museum, Cal State at LA, Fullerton, UC at Irvine, Orange County Museum of Art, and the Irvine Aborium. On May 2nd, I had a LAFCO meeting, and the kids had to go to school that day, but I got to sleep in, so I went to my LAFCO meeting in the afternoon. In the evening was the Annual National Day of Prayer. And let's see, on the 5th, our Rotary had a fundraiser, and went to the West Coast Customs, Coast Customs Meeting, which, on May 6th, and that is coming up, the West Coast Custom Car Show is coming up the 24th through the 26th of this month. And the cruise that everyone likes to see going down Broadway will happen May 24th in the evening from 7:00 to 9:00. And I asked them, give me sort of a ballpark figure, how many cars are gonna be there? I'm thinking it's like maybe 50 or 60. It's like over 600 cars that'll be in that. And so people start putting their chairs out really early in the morning, and I think that is it. Anything else from the dais? If not, this meeting is adjourned.